All right, I'll call our December 2nd, 2014 Planning Commission meeting to order. First item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes from our November 18th, 2014 meeting. I'm sorry, roll call. Roll calls are our first issue. Thanks Kathy. Then we'll get to meeting minutes.
Chair Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Oliver's?
Here.
Commissioner Solison?
Here.
Commissioner Sand?
Here.
Commissioner Jordison?
Here.
Commissioner Holland?
Here.
Great. Thank you for the reminder. Now moving on to our meeting minutes from our November 18th, 2014 meeting. Any comments or questions with regard to the meeting minutes, revisions? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as proposed?
No move. Second.
Kathy?
Commissioner Holland?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
I wasn't in attendance, so I'll abstain.
Commissioner Solison?
I must abstain as well.
Commissioner Oliver's?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Chair Adams?
Yes. As we've been doing at our other meetings, we'll start with Commissioner reports, if any. Commissioner Holland?
Nothing for me tonight?
No report. No report.
Comment. I'd like to earmark for a future discussion about our sign ordinance having to pertain to the banners that are printed and stuck in the ground in front of many businesses that are just proliferating like crazy around town. Thank you.
No report.
And I just want to briefly mention the City of Everett Treaty Committee met on November 20th, and that group has prepared a series of comments that they, I believe, will be submitting to the Planning Department for consideration by the Planning Commission and the City Council in regards to updating the comprehensive plan.
Great, thank you. No report from me. Any report from staff at this point?
Yes, Alan Giffen, Planning Director. I just wanted to remind the Commission of the Boards and Commissions' reception, holiday reception next week, Tuesday, December 9th. I believe it starts at 5:00 at the Ed Hanson Conference Center at the Comcast Arena. That's it.
Great, thanks Alan. At this point, we provide an opportunity for the public to give any comments that they would like to give on items that are not on our agenda. So we have two agenda items tonight. If there are people who'd like to give comments, and Victor, I have yours, so I'll call you first, but we'll open up a microphone to anyone who'd like to give a comment to the Planning Commission. If you'd like to do so, we have forms over by the door. If you could fill one out and hand it up to me, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Harris, I have you signed up, and if you give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
This is Victor Harris, 3017 Lombard in beautiful downtown Everett. Mr. Chairman, recent testimony before you has raised the issue of marijuana retail sales in mixed-use zones. I contributed to downtown plan, the Broadway Plan, and the Evergreen Rucker update. In all these plans, citizens contributed greatly to the development and vision of Everett. We want a community that is accepting and intended of -- we want a community that is accepting of intended changes and functional for our citizens. Above all, we value safety. At no time did I expect an initiative such as I-502 to come to the fore and be adopted so quickly. I'm not certain that when we submitted our thoughts on mixed-use zones that marijuana shops would need to be considered. What are our community standards? During the 1970s and 1980s, the matter of adult magazines occupied a place in the determination of community standards. At one time, those magazines were on open display. Then, community standard bearers said no more. Those magazines were relegated behind the counter and to segregated display areas. Marijuana poses the same question. What are our community standards? Clearly, sales are permitted in the state. This is one standard. I believe Everett and Snohomish County favored adoption of I-502, but does that mean anything goes? Are mixed-use zones appropriate for marijuana sales? Do we permit the intrusion of marijuana retail into family zones? Part of the foundation for mixed use is a live-where-you-work-and-shop-where-you-live lifestyle. Associated with this rationale is a reduction in parking requirements. If an individual shops and works in the neighborhood, there's no need for auto ownership or parking. The licensing limitations on marijuana retail do not meet that concept. There is and will be a high demand for parking. While the community has no objection to marijuana and as a legal retail product, I don't believe the community expects retail shops in areas that might be considered at cross purposes with our values. Activities and businesses that come in conflict with churches, schools, playgrounds are seldom tolerated, and many are restricted by code and licensure. Others are restricted by community standards. There's been a long history comparing the dangers of alcohol and marijuana. For good or for evil, the supporters of marijuana brought this on themselves. My question to you, do we propose to allow takeout retail alcohol sales anyplace in mixed-use zones or in restricted commercial zones only? Should we apply the same standard to marijuana? It may be necessary at this time to take the question of community standard to the citizens of Everett and ask, have our views on mixed-use standards changed, and do we wish to include marijuana retail stores in mixed-use zones? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Would anyone else like to provide public comment? All right, hearing none. We have two items on our agenda tonight. First is a public hearing and recommendations on revisions to the Port of Everett Waterfront Place Central project. In this being a public hearing, as we've talked about before, it's always necessary to disclose any conflicts that exist or discussions that occurred outside of the open forum here. One that I will disclose is I met with Alan and Dave to talk about process as we go through this, and so I met with them at the city. Commissioner Solison also met with us as part of that discussion. Anyone else like to disclose any conflicts or discussions that occurred outside of the meeting format? All right. Anyone have any conflicts that need to be made aware of Commissioners? I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Does anyone like to make us aware of a conflict that a Commissioner has that hasn't been disclosed? All right, hearing none. Alan, I think I turn this over to you for presentation.
Dave will be making the presentation tonight.
Okay, great.
Wait for the -- here we go. Okay, good evening Commissioners. Do a presentation tonight, and then the Port will make a presentation, the follow-up on that. But give a little background, the plan development overlay. The existing master plan was established through the PDO zone in 2005. Allowed for change to certain development standards based on the quality of the development, and that requires that there's a public benefit for those changes. City Council made the finding with the current plan that it was a public benefit in the redevelopment, and the PDO conceptual master plan is implemented through the development agreement between the Port and city as projects come through for permitting. The proposed plan that the Port has is an amendment, is substantial revising the original conceptual site plan. It's considered a major amendment, and so the Planning Commission and City Council must review this action. The property has an overall zoning of waterfront commercial with that plan development overlay. Again, it was first reviewed by Planning Commission and City Council in 2003, and amended in 2005 for the current plan and standards. The proposed plan development concept that's being proposed to you is a multi-district master plan for mixed-use development, has buildings and improvements, public walkways, expanded marina facilities and open space, creates several new gathering places, works with the commercial fishing fleet, has residential and commercial, and is intended to be a high-quality development that will be phased in over time. I won't read these numbers, but basically the same maximum building space overall is allowed. There are some changes in the sense of within this compared to the original one, but the scope of the project has not changed. It's into the high end of the project. The development agreement, conceptual site plan, shows a general location of structures, the allowed uses, features, and themes to be used in design and improvements. The -- what is established is basically the street system. So, once the street system is established, that is the street system, and then from there, lots are created, and then buildings are built within the lots. They don't have to be the same shape or size of what's shown on the site plan, but overall, the amount of open space needs to be the same in the final plan as is shown in the conceptual plan. The agreement that would be between the city and the Port will outline the review procedure as things come through, and there'll be both administrative review and also review through the shoreline master program. The development agreement includes mitigation measures that have been developed through the SEPA review and carried on from the past development agreement, and it has design guidelines that have been revised and provided, some new ones provided as a part of the site plan. The overall master plan must meet or exceed the intent of the city development standards, which we think it does, and the conceptual master plan and development agreement provide a consistent quality as the project is developed over time. Again, the site plan is approved conceptually. Revisions may be required with individual permits, and future reviews will be done that way, and census regulations and mitigation requirements will be on each phase. Future developments may have different building configurations than the conceptual plan. There will be additional environmental reviews in the future, which will examine the projects that come through with the uses, and if those have not already been analyzed, they will be analyzed with additional information. Parking, the overall site will have, has a conceptual parking management plan. This will be reviewed in each phase in sense of what the parking will be, and will ensure that their parking requirements are met in each phase and for the overall development. Phasing of the project. Project is to be developed in several phases. It's not possible to predict which phase could go first. The Port has some ideas, but over time, that could change based on demand for uses as uses come along. Public improvements are to be installed prior to or concurrent with buildings and areas, and interim public access improvements allowed where future development, construction could damage them, and that they're not prepared to move ahead with that part of the public access improvements. Development agreement can be have minor amendments, changes to it, may improve interim permitted uses necessary to facilitate continual operation of the Port and public access. Any future major modifications to the PDO would have to go back to the process that we have now, which is Planning Commission and City Council review. The Port has proposed this conceptual site plan that's on the screen with a street system. The view corridor is removed from 13th Street. There are revised use and building locations from the current plan, and also revised open space concept. Major changes are highlighting what hasn't been changed. There's no changes in the allowed uses compared to the 2005 plan. There is a rearrangement of uses on the site. Housing is proposed within 200 feet of the shoreline, but not more than 100 feet from the water. There are some revised guidelines, design guidelines, both in the original 2003 guidelines. There's modifications, and then the 2005 have been changed with the intent to still have the same quality. Increased public open space in the site plan. There's a proposal for electronic changing message sign at 13th Street, and the 13th Street view corridor is eliminated, as I mentioned earlier. There are five use districts that the Port's proposing. I won't go through all those right now, but you -- they have distinct areas and distinct uses within those areas. The site plan heights are changing because, mainly because of the street vacation change. So, the center of the site will have buildings, as proposed, the buildings would be allowed to be built in the center of the site. There's no increase from the current plan. Height limits would range from 35 feet near the shoreline up to 65 feet towards the center, and then there's one clock tower proposed at 75 feet. Previously, there was a 95-foot Fisherman's Memorial Tower that was proposed, and that has been changed to being a clock tower now. Also, the Warehouser Building is proposed to be put in the shoreline, and that would be taller than the 35 feet. The open space, you can, the old plan is on the left, new plan on the right. Probably the main difference is in this very end out here, is there was an amphitheater that was proposed that was in the original plan right here, and there's now proposed to be a much larger open space at the very end that would be on the west, north, northwest side of the project. Also, there's more of the semi-public space, and then there's some other plazas and such that are proposed here. Also, on the water right here, there's a walkway that's proposed that you could get down on the dock. You can see on this plan, that was proposed at the very end here. There is a proposal, what was 13th Street, there'd be an extension out into the river with a pier out there. That's not proposed at this time. Having a visitor's dock is proposed within the harbor, bringing people further in, and then tying that in with commercial, retail, and housing in this area. There's more open space, as I mentioned, the semi-private areas, more overall open space, and the West End Park is much larger, as I mentioned. An electronic message sign, it's proposed at 13th Street. It, these type of signs are allowed in the waterfront commercial zone otherwise, but in the original proposal, they were not something that was allowed as a part of the development. There was a demonstration on November 20th. Our impacts of sign adequately mitigated to support a finding of compatibility with the surrounding area. That's one of the criteria as a part of the plan development overlay zone criteria. We are taking a neutral position on the sign. Condition 34 in resolution, if Commission approves, the project would be approved. Here's some pictures from the demonstration. Here's the demonstration sign here, which is about six square feet. Up to 60 square feet could be, in this proposal, this is a little bit under that. It's, I believe it was 54. The Port will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in the mid-50s what this sign area would be. So, it's below 60 square feet, but still in the 50-feet range on both sides, 50 square feet.
Location in the upper photo?
Oh, and here's the upper, yeah, here's the, this is the entrance right here, and here's the sign here, and here's a little demonstration. Here's a demonstration down on the street level. The Planning Commission decision criteria, does a proposed change from the 2005 plan to the 14 plan meet the test of being in the long-term interest of the community? And factors that you can use to make the determination is compatibility with surrounding properties, unique characteristics of the subject property. In this case, the waterfront, being a waterfront area and having access to the waterfront is a key thing which the Port is providing. Unique characteristics of the proposed uses, development, the development, quality of development plan, proposed public improvements that will happen over time, and then public benefit from amending the development standards. When this has gone through in 2003 and 2005, it was found that the plans the Port were proposing were compatible, and so it was approved by Planning Commission and City Council. The proposed plan does not change the permitted uses, as I mentioned earlier, does not increase the amount of development, includes revised guidelines, and proposes the electronic message sign. Unique characteristics that the property have not changed. I mean, the property is what it is, but its staff believes that there is more awareness of the location and sense of uses. And what I mean by that is there is an, the expanded open space at the end on the west side where there's a larger park for people. There's also the fishing fleet being a part of this. The last plan did not incorporate that, so it really didn't take in consideration. It was near the water, and having the fishing fleet being functional there, and also an amenity for people to watch and be right next to the, some of the restaurants and retail establishments. Port has been working on this project, so there, you know, it's not something that's just, it has been slow compared to what might have thought of be a project being done faster, but we had an economic downturn, and so the Port has demolished buildings for redevelopment. Contaminated soils are being remediated, and they continue to do that. Streets, streetscape, bulkhead, and utility infrastructure improvements have been instructed, and more of those will be done. The waterfront center building has been completed. Craftsman District and Boatyard have been constructed. There's been, the dry boat storage was put in by, from, on private development, and that's been in there for a number of years, and it's functioning well. And then there's been, a temporary public access trail has been put in and allowed people to use the area while the Port redoes the project. Unique characteristics of the proposed uses, the proposed plan has housing and retail near West Marine View Drive. The housing wasn't there before. It was thought of more of being an office area, a commercial area, so there's more housing up by the street there. The Fisherman's Dock that I just discussed, employment and housing in the center of the site. The prior development or the current agreement has housing in the center of the site, where this is combining employment and housing. There's a more public accessible open space, open park at West End, the relocated Warehouser Building, Pacific Rim Plaza's been added, and then public fishing fleet dock. Quality of development, won't go through all this, but it's felt that, and Port staff has assured us, that their intent is to have a quality development down there, and that the Port plans on continuing the quality that was originally envisioned, and that will be done with the standards that are proposed here. The proposed public improvements that are here in the proposed plan, again, more public access than 2005, larger and more usable access at the West End, public accessible Fisher's Dock, and the Pacific Rim Plaza. Public benefit from amending development standards compared to the 2005. Better integration of site plan with the marinas, creates fishing fleet, relocates historic Warehouser Building into development and making it a community amenity, increased public open space area, and more emphasis on employment and jobs. Staff recommendation, Planning Commission has a resolution in front of you. Findings and conclusions, support approving major amendment to the plan development overlay zone master plan. The packet you have summarizes changes to the agreement. Conceptual site plan and other exhibits have been provided to you, and we're not making any recommendation on that electronic message sign. Tonight, it's a public hearing. We asked that you, after done here, that if you have any questions for staff, you ask us some questions. The Port will make a presentation, then you can ask questions at the Port, open this to the public testimony, close the public hearing, and then Planning Commission having their discussion and motion and action. And that's it, and I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
I just have one quick question. Could you summarize a little bit, summarize our options in terms of tonight? We could make one motion and approve everything. We, I think you've done a really good job in the report that you gave us of kind of giving us the menu approach of different decisions that need to be made here, but it's also my understanding that we could, on a few of these issues, if more discussion was needed, have another meeting before the end of the year to possibly address those. And I just want to get that out on the table, just so that way all the Commissioners understand some of the options that we have.
That's correct. The meeting has been advertised as a potential decision hearing if the Commission is ready to take action tonight. If not, the fallback date would be two weeks from tonight, which would be the 16th, and so the resolution is set up recommending approval, with the exception of the sign, which is for further discussion for you. We did set up the resolution so that individual decision points could be discussed and either acted upon individually, or just hold on to the discussion till the end and make one motion for the entire resolution. It might be easier to do it, the latter approach, but at least have a discussion of some of the major decision points that are outlined in the resolution, in the proposed findings and conclusions.
All right, thank you. Other questions, Commissioners?
I just, I had two. One is, when I went through the materials, I was trying to better understand the sequence of events, and then also the process that was followed in the adopting of the plan development overlay and then the developer agreement. And I'm wondering if what we're talking about tonight is in fact a second amendment to the original PDO, or is it a new PDO? And would the Council then be talking about a second or a first amendment to the developer agreement, or would it be a new developer agreement? It seems to me, what I read and how I can construct what's happened, that we may be in fact amending and making changes to the original concepts and plan that was adopted in 2003, but I'm not sure.
Well, what our attorney has advised is that he would like to have a amended and restated development agreement, and so the existing development agreement would be amended with the, based on a recommendation with the conditions that are contained in the resolution. There are other provisions in the development agreement that wouldn't change, for example, the legal description of the property, or the agreement is between the Port and the city. You know, a lot of the city, you know, a lot of the standard, what I would consider non-substantive elements of the development agreement. But the attorney would like to have an amended and restated development agreement.
So the resolution that was prepared for us with its 11 attachments would essentially be the entire document for approval?
It would be what you're recommending to the city council. What we have included in the resolution would be some flexibility on the part of city staff in working with the attorney to make sure that any wordsmithing changes aren't necessarily prohibited by your action, they'd be authorized, but any substantive changes would not be, we would not be making any substantive changes to your recommendation.
And the last question was, I was trying to determine when the date of the street vacation took place, 13th, if that took place in 2003, 2005, or whenever?
I believe it actually took place in 2006. The development agreement that is currently in effect was executed around the end of 2005, so I believe the ordinance that vacated 13th Street was in early 2006.
Thank you.
I'm a little interested in, the developer at one time was an outside entity, and now it's the Port of Everett, correct? Is that correct?
That is correct.
And I'm just kind of curious about the nature of the, how the real estate will be transacted. Will, will the Port of Everett remain as the owner of the property? Will they lease the property? Will it be a build-to-suit type of situation, or will they sell it? And the reason I'm curious is because of the, how this, how this development will be, you know, maintained and managed for the life of the project. That's what I'm kind of wondering about, and how, can you shed, maybe that's a question for the port later on?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's a good question. I'll have the port address that. Any other questions for staff at this point? Thank you. I think we're ready to ask the port to make their presentation.
Thank you. I'm Teri Batshuello with the Port of Everett staff, and with me tonight are Lisa LaFaber, Dennis Derrickson, Graham Anderson, Jeff McClure with our team, and Nicole, and RMC Architects. So some of the stuff that we are going to cover in our presentation, we'll kind of go quickly over because the city has done a really good job of summarizing the plan, but we wanted to make sure we go a little further in depth than we did in our first brief overview of the project. So I will try not to be repetitive. Okay, so. Our presentation includes the guiding principles from our approach of how we're approaching the plan, the master plan, the design objectives, the districts and elements, strategic details and planning matters. On the strategic details and planning matters, you'll be hearing from Denny about those items. This is a review of basically our guiding principles. As you may recall, we had about a 20-member ad hoc committee that worked with us to help us develop our goals for designing the project, redesigning the project. They were to enhance core values of the port, and that had a lot to do with making the project more cohesive with the marina and preserving the value of the current planning effort. This community put a lot of effort into developing the plan for Port Gardner Wharf. It's unfortunate, it was unable to go forward, but we did what we could to preserve as much of the plan as we could while creating a more feasible plan that would be, oh, also one that we think will do a better job of reflecting the character of the community, creating jobs, and creating a sense of place as a destination, which are some of the goals. We want to make sure we have a successful implementation and that we set conditions for ongoing success. And we have reviewed our final proposal with the members of the ad hoc committee in one-on-one meetings, and found that they were very pleased with our interpretation of their comments to us. This is a slide that we prepared just to summarize the level of community outreach that the port has conducted, in addition to what the city has done. City has mailed a lot of postcards and put out our documents at different, various locations, and used their other advertising methods, but we've done extensive outreach through the media, through social media, through community meetings, through direct mail, through events, and we summarized them here just so that you are aware of the fact that we've done a lot of work to try to reach to the community and find out and get their input on the plan. There are several benefits that we think are really important, particularly to the port, and they are to generate jobs. The total project will support over 2,000 jobs, and we hope that those will be family wage jobs. Even in our retail areas, we're promoting retail production-type facilities, like you might see on Granville Island, that are production-based, that are like distilleries or cheesemakers, or people that make things like sales. In fact, tonight, we just signed a lease for a company called Ocean Gate, which has just broken out of a P3 with the University of Washington Advanced Physics Laboratory. They are a submersibles company, and they do oceanic research on a contract basis. They've just taken 5,000 square feet in waterfront place at the Craftsman District, and they'll be operating there with the submarines. So it'll be pretty exciting. We think that's a great partner for Orca, which also recently expanded, adding 25 new student seats to the Running Start Program. This is the most successful Running Start Program in the state, graduating 98% of its enrolled. And other types of projects that we're doing down there to try to really emphasize the location, the history, and the nearshore environment. The project overall will significantly contribute to the tax base for state and local taxes. Our estimate is $8.6 million annually, plus the construction sales tax on a one-time basis. There are no less than 430 housing options with two waterfront hotels. The housing is particularly important. We've just wrapped up our market study of housing to project the demand for housing over the next 10 years, and we have found that although the region is growing significantly, Snohomish County is only absorbing about 12% of the housing, and it's less than 1% in Everett. So we think the housing units are desperately needed, and we're excited to provide some. There's at least six restaurants and a diverse mix of commercial and retail, and we've been talking to a lot of retailers, and we have a lot of excitement in the industry about that. There are 15 public spaces, including trails, parks and, parks and other types of venues and vistas, and these are going to be uniquely developed to reflect the character and history of the city of Everett. One of our handouts tonight goes into detail on the conceptual ideas behind the public spaces that we anticipate beginning to design this January. This is a slide almost exactly like the city's, summarizing the development. There ranges from the least to the most. The hotels, we're anticipating one hotel of 120 rooms, one hotel of 60 rooms. The 60-room hotel would be more of a boutique, high-end hotel with a spa and a restaurant. The 120-room hotel would be more of a business hotel with meeting space and the residential. So that's pretty much what Dave showed. I just want to point out that that is the same range of developed area as the Port Gardner Wharf plan has. We know how important density is in cities, and we want to create that. This is the site plan. I'll point out at the bottom of the slide, tab five, exhibit 1-1, kind of gives you an idea where this exhibit can be found in your notebook, if you want to go to the bigger version. And the site plan shows the building locations, the roadway, and it also does some profile cutting through the site. Section A, B, and C correspond to the A, B, and C letters on the site plan, kind of show you what the profile of the project would be. These are the districts. We worked with a marketing firm called Red Propeller, who also did the marketing branding for a place called Library Place here in Everett. They're specializing in really creating authentic places and brands, and we worked with them to make sure that our districts reflect the flavor of Everett and created a unique destination that people would want to come to and want to experience, either to live, or to work, or to just come for a visit. I'll talk a little bit about each of those districts. The first district, the Craftsman District, I just mentioned, we just had the new tenant signed up. There is one of the submersibles that they're testing out through our travel lift, and in the smaller picture is a picture of Waterfront Place Central, our building that was built a few years back. It is almost nearly completely occupied. We have one more tenant announcement to make, and then we have one more space that we are talking with tenants about, and it will be completely occupied. One tenant we're really excited about is Blue Water Distillery, who is actually going to be opening a lounge, a fresh bar, and opening an expanded facility this spring. And then, of course, everybody knows about Scuttlebutts. And we also have a number of marine retails that go around the boatyard. Our boatyard has received a lot of accolades, and has, its reputation in the region is growing, not only because of the quality of the service that our longshoremen provide, but also because of its status as a clean boatyard, and has a lot of environmental sustainability to make sure that none of the chemicals or materials used in the boatyard find its way into the water. And because it's advanced in that area, our boatyard is getting a lot of business from other marinas that don't have their marina boatyards built to the same standards, so. And also there is the Fisherman's Tribute, a tribute to the commercial fishing fleet. Fisherman's Harbor is the, the next phase of Phase 1, so Craftsman is Phase 1A, and Fisherman's Harbor is 1B. Craftsman is nearly done, except for the Amron Building, that will come down in 2017, and the last cleanup on the site will be performed. But Fisherman's Harbor is pretty much ready to go. We're under construction on the last cleanup there in the water. We're building a new bulkhead, and we will be going out to bid this spring for the sixth, or the third segment of the bulkhead there that will make way for those restaurants to go in on the pier and the walking dock and the esplanade to be developed. This is a retail hospitality mixed-use area with the 120-room hotel. The commercial fishing wharf is what's really shown in the illustration. We did a very careful economic study of the potential for growth of the commercial fishing fleet, and we found that we really can't compete with Anacortes and Seattle in terms of providing commercial fishing facilities. But what we also found is that our fleet is very loyal to this area because they have many generations of fishermen here, and so this is kind of a lost leader for us. The port does not really break even on commercial fishing activities, but we really want to highlight it and make it a permanent part of the project, but we also want to bring it forward so that people can experience that. The Dock Walk is a facility that you'll be able to walk along the water, even if you don't have a boat, and enjoy picnics on the activity barges. And then the Pacific Rim Plaza is a really exciting park that's on the place where the old travel lift was taken out. We're calling it Pacific Rim Plaza because it intends to reflect the mission of the port as an international trading port. It's got a water feature, it's very exciting, and the illustration will be done in January, so I don't have it yet, but it is a really cool park. We'll be, we'll have flags of our trading partners there. It will have a globe that highlights and shows the trade routes of the port with our many partners, so more to come on that. The Millwright District is our tribute to the mill industry. There were mills, of course, you know, on this site, and Millwright is the name of a job that was done, a generalist in the mill industry. All the internal streets are named for jobs that were done in the mill industry because we want this to reflect that this is a working person's town, and we want it to reflect the history. So this is a commercial mixed-use area. The upper floors are office or residential, and there are several pedestrian trail connections through the site, including one that goes up and over the four central buildings, parking structure. That's what's shown there, is a viewing platform in the center of the site. There are four courtyards there. And then also the Workman's Clock, which will be a feature that you'll see upon arrival to the site, and it'll be the city-facing view of the project. The Workman's Clock will be inspired by a clock that was used in the warehouser mills in the 1850s, and it is a really cool clock that we have in our lobby that has all kinds of whirlygigs on it, and we're going to do an artist competition to develop the design for that clock tower that will be a real key feature. This product, this district is called the Wharf's Edge, and this is kind of a tribute to the Port Gardner Wharf project. That was one of the districts that we did keep, and there was a lot of effort that went into that project. But this is the live-work residential area. This is mostly housing. This road shown here, called a Wernhof, is a natural street. It's all flat. It does have two-way 12-foot lane traffic, but it can be bollarded off and create a great street fair space that's protected from the wind. We think that we can do that, street fairs there and on the east-to-west roads on the inside, and either do our farmer's market there, car show, all kinds of things in this area. Around the pier, it actually wraps around like arms around the whole project, is the esplanade. This is a connecting piece, this is the public realm. It's a 12-foot unobstructed continuous trail, plus eight feet of amenities that kind of make it merry into the areas as it surrounds and wraps through the various districts. At the end of the pier, you've heard about Boxcar Park, our tribute to the railroad industry. Boxcars used to roll out to the end of the pier to get loaded up with cedar shakes before they headed off across the country. That two-acre park will feature the Warehouser Muse, which is the warehouser building that will use as a marina clubhouse indoors and on the backside, as you can see in the photo, as a performance venue. There's a children's play area, those little kind of mounds with bridges and little tide pool areas is the children's play area. There's a kite-flying area to the south, area for picnics, that will have sort of sailcloth picnic shelters. And then there's also interpretive viewing platforms that are shown with the green dots on the, on the map on the, on the lower side. Those vistas will have various interpretations. We want to do one about our cleanup effort. We like to do something with the tribes. We've been meeting with the Tulalip tribes, talked to them about what would be a respectful and appropriate way to incorporate their history into the site in one or more areas, and there may be another tribute to some other aspect of history, perhaps the railroad. So, that's the esplanade. So those are the districts. The only thing I wanted to mention on the design guidelines is that we went through both sets of design lines, guidelines, to bring them current with the names of the roads, the names of the districts, the uses, but we didn't try to change the quality of the design guidelines. I know a lot of work went into creating those. Our goal is to create the same quality of project. We did provide redline versions of both the 2003 and 2005 versions, even though we had to retype some of that because we didn't have the originals, just so that you could see that we really made an earnest effort of creating the same quality. Another reason that there were changes because we had fewer districts, so we couldn't say, and the district shapes are different, so you couldn't just say this district takes place of this other district. We had to kind of rewrite that section. And then I also was going to mention, as part of the design guidelines, is that because the port, and this kind of goes to one of the questions, is because the port will serve as master developer, but we will recruit developers from the private sector to build various lots, we will enter into development agreements with those parties that will also include a review of their site before it ever comes to the city. We will be guaranteeing and assuring that the design guidelines are met. We will enter into various types of agreements, and those will be subject to the commission We will enter into various types of agreements, and those will be subject to the commission. We're trying to be responsive to the marketplace, but we want to keep the project assembled. So we don't plan to sell any waterfront property. We may sell some inward inland lots for residential development because it's a less complicated way to do that. We also plan to manage all the roads and public open spaces as the port, and then private courtyards and private parking will be managed under an association so that it is managed under an umbrella, and the quality that the port wants to see is maintained site-wide. This is the phasing plan. As you can see, Phase 1A is the boatyard, and it's a good example of the fact that although we've done a significant amount of work there, there's still the Amron site to be demolished, and the boatyard needs to be extended. In 2015, we're doing a business plan for how we want to operate there, and we'll finish up the Phase 3 in 2017. But, you know, pretty much we're done with it for now. Phase 1B is the Fisherman's Harbor area, and Phase 3 is the Millwright. Phase 4 is Wharf's Inn, and I think I might have got that wrong, but the esplanade wraps around the edge. So for each of these projects, we've given you guys a table that shows which public improvements go with which phase, and I believe Denny's going to discuss that further. But it's our intention, if we were the developer, which, as I said, we're going to recruit private development, we would start at the highway side and just work our way out. But we want to be responsive to the market. We'll go as fast as the market will and our capacity will allow us. That might mean that we would build several phases at one time. And so the way we set up the whole thing is that there's a list of required projects with each phase, that before occupancy could occur of any building, our phase, everything in our phase would have to be done. That's not to say there might be sites that don't get built when we start a new phase. Like if we started Fisherman's Harbor, we might move to the second or third phase, but we would finish all the, our commitment, even if building pads are left vacant. So I hope that makes sense. We talked about this before. This is the open space comparison. As we've talked, we've tried to move our development to the middle and leave more of the outer areas best places for the public. We did a count of the square footage of building footprints, and we've created 33% more open space on the edges of the property than were in the Waterfront Place, which we think is a great benefit. We also think the project is much improved by that. Along those lines, these are the project heights for Port Gardner Wharf. On the left and on the right is our new plan. As you can see, the area around the edge is wider on the left, and we've pushed in the heights to the middle. The building footprints are not set in stone. They can be kind of changed up a little bit, but we can't cover more area with the building footprint. So even if the purple area is bigger than the building, that doesn't mean we can make a building that big. We can only make a building as big as the area allows. So we have to keep that open space. So. This is an exhibit about the circulation. I wanted to point out that we've designed a number of different kinds of roads throughout the project. All of these will be operated by the port, maintained by the port. These will not be a part of the City of Everett's maintenance responsibility, but they're very nice streets that are pedestrian-friendly, got sidewalks everywhere Dave wanted them, and great trees and streetscapes, so. Wanted to mention something about the parking budget. You know, we do know that we have two parking plans that were created, or two parking assessments that were done, and that we have a range of parking that goes with the density. But the way that it works is each phase, for it to be built to its fullest capacity, requires a certain number of parking. And for instance, if we didn't build all the parking required for Phase 1, we wouldn't be able to build Phase 3 until we did. We wouldn't be able to build it at the same density. So Alan has referred to this as our parking budget, which we'll have to keep a very close eye on, and they will be reviewing whenever we do permits. That's my part, so I'm going to hand the microphone over to Denny. Surprise. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Denny Derrickson, a consultant for the Port of Everett on this project. To make this as condensed as I can, because we want to hear from the public, obviously, I have already given the commission through the port a detailed written explanation for some of the first bullets that I'll go through or first slides I'm going through with you. So hopefully, if you've done your homework, I can make it, this really, this portion short. But with regard to the shoreline master program, yeah. Thank you. With regard to the PDO criteria, didn't we do the, okay, you moved them. All right. The PDO criteria, that's the 11-page version that's in your packet, so I'm not going to go through that in detail, obviously. A couple of things I'd like to stress, though, are that there are so many new shoreline opportunities for the public that these changes in the site plan that require the amendments that we've been talking about already, that we have to prove this public benefit and meeting these PDO criteria. But all of these changes really focus on pretty much the same idea of providing a much better site experience for the public, as well as continue to make the project a market success, but really opening up the shoreline to a wider range of uses and more public use and better visual access to our shorelines. There's especially a few things in here, I think, that are really important, and those are that we do provide the public improvements that are needed. Terry's really talked about that quite a bit. And that we really are trying to take more unique advantage of the unique characteristics of the site, bringing in more of the cities and the waterfront of the city's history, its commercial maritime fishing businesses, shipping industry, the timber industry, railroads, and so forth. So these are the things that I think really are improvements over the original plan. Go on to the shoreline amendment. Again, I did provide a written response to the commission, and I did talk about this at the last workshop with the commission at length, so I'm not going to belabor it too much. But the main things are more public shoreline open space. That's really the takeaway message. The amendment does allow for a little bit, in fact, that's the red, you can see more of a presence of, actually, before no presence. Now there is a limited presence of residential within the shoreline 200-foot zone, only within the back 100 feet, though. More importantly, except for a small 1/6 of an acre portion, almost all of this footprint is basically upper-floor residential uses, and virtually all of the original proposed water-oriented commercial uses and public uses on the ground floors are retained. So we're not really losing any significant water-oriented uses of the ground floor, which is where most of these uses really want to be anyway. But we're just adding the bonus of what we call some vertical upper-floor mixed use, which helps these other uses stay viable in the off-seasons and all year round, in fact. So that's really crucial, and so I think that's what we're trying to point out with this graphic. Again, we've talked about this in the prior workshop, and, you know, the picture's worth a thousand words, but I think we pretty well demonstrated that there's really no distinction of significance between the 2005 plan and the updated 2014 plan in terms of visual impacts, and that the 13th Street corridor has been compromised by the changes in the site plan from the 2003 to the 2005 version that was eventually approved. And so that there's really not a significant loss of visual access from the site itself through the 13th Street corridor, because that was pretty much taken away already. But more importantly, it frees up the change in the site plan that the new version allows. Without that 13th Street corridor having to be there, we're able to push more of the density to the center of the site with no additional significant visual impact and free up more shoreline space for the public. And especially, I think, it didn't even dawn on me really to make that point at the discussion we had with you last time, but on the northwest portion of the site, along the visual jewel of the site, that was really, there was this cluster of several buildings in the 2005 plan that really prevented most of that visual access from much of the site, unless you're right along the shoreline edge itself in front of those buildings. So that's been opened up, and so I think we've really improved the visual access across much of the site by this site, important site plan change. So this shoreline amendment, really, and the 13th Street corridor changes are really important to the success of the new project. Next. Ah, the message board. And I guess the two things here that are most important are that the port does agree with the conditions that have been outlined in Special Condition or Regulation 34. And so, you know, if the commission sees fit to accept the message board with these conditions, that certainly would work for the port. But if the commission is not disposed toward doing that, I think the port wants to make it clear that it's willing to let go of that if that's the case, but it's really important for the port to have the option of putting a backlit or internally illuminated static, not a message sign at all, but basically a project identification sign at the entrance on 13th Street, because that's just fundamental. It's common sense for a project this large of this scale. I've worked on a lot of mixed-use projects, and I couldn't imagine any project I've worked on in the past not having this kind of sign at its entry to at least tell people what it is, and it's just, you know, quite an attractive sign design. So that would be the fallback for the port if the message board doesn't work for the commission. And the sign technology is out there to make these, if the port is, or the city is interested in approving the electronic message sign, the new technology is amazing in being able to control the sign impacts on the surrounding area just by the hour, by the amount of light in the sky, or turning the sign off at nine o'clock, and all these things are so automated and so amazing. So the technology's there, but if the commission's not ready, then this would be the fallback. Amenities by phase. I think you've already gotten a pretty good sense of that from Terry's presentation, but the important thing is, I counted up, and for each district, there's multiple new amenities, and listed are some of the biggest ones, but there's at least two, well, I counted at least two what I call potentially iconic level or quality of public spaces or pathway segments that are really unique and special in each of these districts. And then on top of that, several smaller improvements in each one as well. So as each district is completed, there'll be an additive effect of all of these public amenities. So, but each, they're not just concentrated in one last district at the end of the project or anything like that. They're basically just spread around in each of the districts, so as the project progresses, there's just going to be this beautiful accumulation of these public benefit improvements, I think, that will really make this project special. So, and the port's committed to that, as you can see. Interim access. This is really important. You know, the city's been consistent on this since they worked on the first version of the project years ago, and I think the port understands that. And so there is, as the diagrams show, the location may change around a little bit as each phase of the project moves along, and we keep moving that, maybe constantly, but occasionally moving that north-south or east-west set of pathway corridors around to accommodate the construction. But they will be there all the way through the project, from the very beginning to the very end. They'll be maintained with these periodic adjustments, but they will always be there available for the public to enjoy throughout the life of the project, so, until the permanent versions take their place. And so I think that it'll be a good solution to the needs of the community as the project continues. So. Binding site plan. That's an important technical step in this process. Of course, because there is a new site plan that would be hopefully approved by the commission and the council, the old binding site plan will have to be significantly revised to reflect the new parcel pattern, new roadways, new utility areas and the public open spaces. So it's something that's, you know, gone, it's an administrative process approved by the planning director, but only after, of course, the council, the city council has approved the new site plan, but that's another step in this process. But it's another check and balance to make sure that the access and everything is provided. One thing I didn't mention on the streets and circulation system, that this new circulation system has been vetted like no circulation system ever seen be vetted, because we had the original traffic engineering firm tested with their computer modeling to make sure the stacking and during peak hours that people could actually get in and out of the site without monster backups, and that worked according to their testing. Then we went to an outside firm, Petite Engineering, and had it kind of peer-reviewed for, on a value engineering basis, to see if they agreed, and they're experts in this field. They did their modeling and their tests, even added the sophisticated kind of, because we had some roundabouts in the project to make sure that the trucks and the buses and the fire trucks could make the turns and circulate through the site without backing up and so forth. They found a couple of little glitches, and so the site plan was fixed for that. And then on top of that, then we've already had the fire marshal go through this thing with a fine-tooth comb, and he's basically given it his blessing. So there's been a few minor improvements to this original version, but what you see now is the improved version of this. So everybody who really has expertise in this area has already said it works, so we're pretty proud of that as part of the design. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're here to answer questions asked, requested.
All right. Commissioner, questions for the port?
I've got a couple of questions. One relates to the proposed residential development within 100 feet of the shoreline. I was wondering, for those residential uses, where would the parking be for those uses in general? Would it be within the shoreline area?
I'm going back to the parking. Did I pass it? Yeah, all of the parking is very decentralized. It's not one big giant parking area, so for each housing area, there's parking directly adjacent to it. And there is parking in the shoreline area, but the parking for the residential is pretty much behind it or as under it or right around it. So I'm trying to think of it, it's not really in the shoreline area. There is parking in the shoreline area. Do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I'll just add, just quickly. Yeah, I looked at Jeff McClure, the site designer for the project architect, and he said, "No, the structured parking," as I recall, too, "is outside of the shoreline, outside, behind the buildings or in the back of the buildings." So none of that structured parking would be within the shoreline zone. As Terry said, there'll be a limited amount of primarily marina-related dedicated parking within the shoreline zone, as there was in the original 2005 plan, but actually, there's less surface parking overall, including marina parking, in the new version of the plan compared to the old version. And of course, most shoreline master programs, including Everett's, discourage, they don't completely prohibit, but they really kind of discourage putting more parking, structured or surface, within the shoreline zone. So I think this, the new plan does a better job than the old plan in that area, so, and there's more public open space instead.
And then just another question that I have. You talk about the circulation plan, and the commission has been learning about the additional density, housing density in particular, that Everett is going to be planning for with our update to the comp plan. So transit-oriented development, do you, I haven't really heard that phrase, and maybe I've missed that in the description of the document, but are you planning on buses, city buses, being able to come into the development?
Absolutely, yes. The first plan had that feature, and we think we've done even a better job the second time around. There's been lots of discussion with Everett Transit. Again, the Petite folks, who are a lot of expertise in that area, too, they've looked at it to make sure it works for the buses, but everybody's on the same page. The project has a designated transit center that would focus on some amenities for passengers and also bus pullovers and stops, right, are focused primarily around the current waterfront center building of the port, but there'd be other transit stops throughout the site as well. But it's a very transit-friendly design for transit.
This may actually be a question more for staff, and that has
This may actually be a question more for staff, and that has to do with, the plan that gets adopted is a concept plan, but there are probably certain elements that are pretty much fixed. And I think, Dave, you mentioned that the roadway or the street system would be fixed, so there wouldn't be any potential modifications to that at all. But other than that, some of it is up for some minor modifications. Would that also apply to the parking structures? Seems to me that the parking structures have become a major element of the project as a way to move buildings inward and open up more space. But is there possibly that the parking, that those major parking structures would change over time?
From what's in the original plan here?
Yeah.
Well, they, when somebody gets into the detailed drawings of designing the buildings, what we've determined in the past in looking at this, and we explored it with attorneys who are representing all of the McMullen on the riverfront on what their options are, if you had a 40,000-square-foot building and you chose to do two 20,000-square-foot buildings, that's okay. So what you could have is maybe where, instead of a larger housing development, I mean, a building with, say, 120 units, somebody splits it out into two 60s and the parking changes as a result of that. So that would be something that would be considered a minor amendment. But the streets, but the way the street sections that they're proposing with landscaping and sidewalks and distances, those would be set. The traffic pattern that they show up there and the street grid, or it's not really a grid, but, you know, the loop and such, that would be set. So then, and any changes to that would be something that would then have to have, it would be a major amendment, anything where you start changing the street system.
And the streets would be public or private?
They're going to be, the port is a public agency, so.
Yeah.
So, but they will not be city streets, they will be public port streets.
Okay. Thank you.
So the binding site plan would become binding in terms of the circulation plan after an approval from this Commission and City Council?
Correct. That'd be the next step. The port already implemented the last plan and have a binding site plan. So they'd have to basically start over and provide us a new drawing, basically, that would be approved.
If I may have one more question. Regarding the shoreline amendment to allow housing within the 100-foot, within 100 feet of the shoreline, the areas that are marked on that slide in red are part of residential buildings. And this question is a follow-up to Commissioner Stewart's regarding parking for those structures. And based on your answer, it would sound as though surface parking is already allowed within the 200-foot shoreline jurisdiction, but underground second-floor parking, if it was integrated into those buildings, would not exist within that 200 feet? Or it would?
There's designated parking for the residential that's for them only, not shared.
Right.
And it's behind in each of these blocks. It's behind it, not in front of it. I was going to see if I had a pointer where I can just show you where the parking structures are, but they're, but they are behind all of those buildings.
You probably get the, there you go.
Oh, okay, I'll use that. Oops, crap. Let's see, which way? There. All right. So for these residential, they're, we anticipate retail on the ground floor with residential over, and these are commercial buildings on the backside. So this would be a two-story parking structure with parking, or with a green space on the top. And then right here is a parking structure in the middle of these buildings. So we're trying to hide the parking structures by wrapping them with the building. Where the hotel is here, there's an entry to the hotel here. We've actually, let's see. Yeah, I can't see it very well, but anyway, there's a building there. But this right here in the middle, this is a parking structure. And then here where the clock tower building is, and there's a little smaller building, there's parking structure in here. Underneath these four buildings is two levels of parking with the parking, or with the green courts on the top, with our, kind of our harbor steps trail that goes over the top, call this Timberman Trail. So these four buildings are on top of a parking structure that's wrapped with ground-floor commercial retail production, like on Granville Island kind of thing, on the ground floor. And then we think these two might be residential on the top. We're hoping we can do office on the top of these, if we can, we could get a major tenant. This is more of a single-use office, these two. And then as you get out here to the Wernhof, these, we would like to see live-work, where we have like services on the ground floor, like CPAs or a tailor or something like that, with lofts above, or they could be townhomes. And these, we think, will be condos or townhomes. We haven't done the market study on this. We've done the market study on this, but we haven't done this one yet. And the parking structure for all of these are under them. So that kind of explains.
One more question. Can you point to any buildings that you suspect will not have commercial use on the ground floor that would be within the 100-foot setback?
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
And. That's it.
That's it. Okay. And those might be townhome-style with a ground-floor stoop.
We'd like to see condos there, but it may not be, there may not be a market. So the plan was for condos there, but we have to do our market study to see if we can get that there.
And the rest of those red highlighted areas are ground-floor commercial or live-work type of service-oriented? Okay, thank you.
Terry, can you talk about the phasing? In particular, the phasing on Boxcar Park? Because I noticed Boxcar Park occurs over three different phases. And then one of the things you brought up earlier was that the phases may be completed out of order.
Yeah, there's a lot of interest at the end of the pier. And so I could see us starting on Fisherman's Harbor. By the way, there's 16 capital projects for the port there. And the esplanade, in order for this site to be developed, the port would have to complete all the public access projects in phase two, which would include Boxcar Park. The Warehouser is in the third phase. But there's a table in the section, tab eight, that shows kind of where each of these projects fall. And Boxcar Park itself gets built with this hotel, and the Muse comes third. However, because of the overpass the city may build, we may need to move it forward because we can't move Warehouser under the overpass. So it's kind of dependent on that. But we tried to split Boxcar and Warehouser into two separate phases just because of the, it's an extraordinary cost, and tried to match it up with Box, or with the Warehouser with this development and this development with this, so that we could make it work through the performa.
If I remember correctly, the grading gets done on phase 1B, with 1B, and then hard surfaces go in on a different phase, and then public restrooms go in on a different phase.
Some of the public restrooms are already built, so, but the, this whole phase right here is all in the first, that's all Fisherman's Harbor. So we're already in, we're already into construction on this bulkhead. We're going to start construction on the remainder of the bulkhead in the spring. The infrastructure for this park starts at the same time this bulkhead piece starts, and then we're starting on the design. We've already surveyed this whole wharf. So we're already moving on all of these projects. But we can't really bite off all of this at the same time because of, because of the way the financing of the project works. I think with Port Gardner Wharf, they had a different phasing strategy, but what we've done is tried to match it all up here. If we suddenly got interest for phase two, we would have to do all of, all of those pieces and some of the utility work, because this area out here needs sewer, water, that kind of thing. So there are some projects that will have to be done, whether or not they're in that phase or not.
Okay. Of course, I think I'd like to see Boxcar Park done at one time. I think everyone would. I mean, obviously, huge public amenity. One of the concerns that I have is currently there's a trail that runs through there, and I think that park gets quite a bit of use, even in its current condition, good access to the water. What happens when the grading's done and that trail's pulled out? How long could that sit without the hard services going in?
We will not not have a trail. That's what the interim park plan requires, that there'll be never a time where we don't have a trail, where we had those, what we tried to do here. So right now, there's a trail that wraps all the way around, and then we've kind of created a makeshift trail through the middle and a makeshift, we have trails going through this, and then we have this trail at the end. And so what we're saying here is that no matter what, through the whatever seven years of construction this project is, we will always have a trail east to, or north to south in this zone, always north to south in this zone, always north to south in that zone. So it may move or meander, but we'll always make sure there is a, at least asphalt trail. And as we finish each phase, it has to be finished to the design quality in the design guidelines. So there'll always be trails. It just, it depends on whether or not we're working that phase or not.
Okay. Okay.